I have been peripherally aware of some cool things that are going on up there. As a big believer in recycling, garbage to garden, member of that. And I asked Mr. Creach if perhaps we could have the Ecos Club come and talk to the board about this cool stuff that they are doing. So, I do know that we have the president, Hannah Grover, and we have the vice president, Patrick Snowden, and we also have another visitor. Would you like to tell me who is also with you?
Andrew Rassell, I'm the treasurer.
Oh, and so we have Andrew, who is also the treasurer. And we have with them their advisor for Ecos, Terry Eddy. And I had asked, Mrs. Johnson, Johnston and I were talking about Ecos earlier, and I said, "I think it is Ecology Club of Scarborough," but is that not right?
No.
What's that?
Environmental.
Okay, and so, we're pretty close. And I know that you have a presentation that you're ready to do. Who's gonna do that? All of you? Okay, great.
All right, so yeah, we've been working really hard as a club to get this composting program going, and we're really excited that it's finally rolling. And there's been a lot of hard work that's gone into it, and we're really, just really excited to have it going.
Right now, we have listed here some reasons to compost. Thirty-five million tons of food waste per year end up in US landfills and incinerators. And these landfills and incinerators contribute to climate change by emitting methane and producing greenhouse gases. And composting reduces this climate change by acting as a carbon sink, absorbing the carbon. And composting does not pollute groundwater, the areas of water under the ground, and enhances soil's ability to retain water, reduces the need for irrigation, and protects against erosion.
So, one problem that climate change has been causing is that we're running out of, or caused, yeah, that is causing climate change, is that we're running out of landfill space. And landfills emit methane, which is harming our whole planet. So, the really cool thing about composting is that soil, healthy soil is a carbon sink. So, instead of having waste go into a landfill and emit harmful methane and CO2, we're having this carbon sink that is helping take those things out of the atmosphere.
Yeah, basically, the great thing about producing this new soil is that it is a carbon sink, and basically just traps all the carbon and keeps it out of the atmosphere.
So, this is a picture of the Soil Food Web, and it's just a demonstration of what can happen when you have healthy soil, and it builds a foundation for a strong ecosystem, which helps with the whole idea of soil being a carbon sink, and also just helps the planet in general.
And here's some of the people who helped make this happen. We have us, Ecos, the Environmental Club of Scarborough, then we had our teachers, who were very encouraging, and the nutrition services at our school, and definitely garbage to garden, and especially the custodians at our school put a lot of extra time and effort into it, and the students themselves, who were able to embrace this new system so quickly and easily.
So, like we mentioned, our contractor is Garbage to Garden. They do, have done a lot of really cool things for us. They provide compost bins, locks, and keys, and pick up the compost every Friday. They even clean the bins out for us, help us monitor the bins. They really helped a lot with the startup. We had an assembly, we had the entire school come into the auditorium, and they came, and Kendall had a presentation that she had already for us, and it was really wonderful how they were just able to help us kickstart all of it and come in. And for the first few days, first couple of weeks actually, they stood at the bins with us during lunch and helped us monitor and teach the students how to compost successfully.
All right, here we have a demonstration of basically how Garbage to Garden does what they does. Basically, all of the food waste and other compostable items go into their bins, and then they're pulled out and composted, pulled down, broken down into compost, and that turns into soil that is adequate for any garden or anything.
So, this is one of the pictures from the presentation that Garbage to Garden came and shared with the school. A lot of the slides on this are from that presentation, just because they're so relevant. So, what they compost is seven and a half tons a day, and their business is growing really fantastically, and we're really happy to be a part of that and the whole composting movement.
And here we have a picture of basically what the average composting station at our school looks like. We have a compost bin on the left, and in the middle we have a can and bottle bin where all the plastic bottles and cans go into, and the trash bin we have where you can throw everything that's not compostable. And for the past few weeks, we've had students coming up and learning really quickly where they're supposed to put their stuff, and we've had Ecos members standing there and helping them out when they need it.
So, at our school, we can compost all food, all liquid, napkins, and tea bags and paper wrappers, and paper products. And the paper, it's a little bit confusing because some of them are glossy and some of them are not glossy, and only the not glossy are compostable. But people have been doing really well catching on to that so far.
Here we basically have a picture of stuff regarding, disregarding food that can be composted. We have regular, straight, non-glossy paper products, like paper plates, paper wrappers, and napkins. And here's some stuff that cannot be composted. We got glossy paper products, like the soup cups and the salad plates, and styrofoam, and other plastic salad dishes, and utensils, and straws.
So, we worked really hard to launch an educational campaign, because really, something like this only works when everybody involved in the system really totally understands what they're doing and where their food is going. So, Garbage to Garden has helped provide phrases like "when in doubt, throw it out." We have made a lot of posters as a club, and there have been a lot of emails sent to the staff. We had a whole school-wide assembly, and presented at a staff meeting to kind of get the teacher's support before we presented to the entire school. And our members have been doing a great job. Some of them are, a lot of them are really dedicated. They come during every lunch for a few weeks now, and they've been wearing shirts that Garbage to Garden has provided, and standing at the sorting stations, because people still do need people, other people who know how to compost, right there telling them what to do. It's really helpful to have somebody else able to say that's not compostable and that is, so.
This is the basic foundation of what we're doing. Basically, if it grows, it goes. That means anything that grows in the garden, or even meat too, can be thrown into our composting bins, and it will be taken to Garbage to Garden and broken down for us.
This is what we told the students at the assembly. The success really does depend on them, because each person who chooses to compost is just one small part of the entire system. And it's been important emphasizing that students need to dump their trays early, because a lot of times, I mean, when you have a bunch of high schoolers in one room, everyone's just so excited to talk to their friends and everything, that they wait till the end to get rid of their trays and stuff. So, it's been a little bit of a change, realizing that you do need to get up and throw your things away as soon as you're done eating. And we needed to make sure that everybody got to class on time, so that there wouldn't be any overlap from this whole composting program into classes, because of course, they're so important. And another thing that we've been careful to watch out for is contamination. They say ninety-nine percent compost and one percent trash is a hundred percent trash. So, we have been looking as bin monitoring, people just kind of like checking in all the bins, and we've been just kind of gathering information informally like that, so that's what we've been doing.
And here's how we've been paying for it. We paid three hundred dollars for our bins from Ecos funds, and we've also been having a weekly compost pickup fee split by both Ecos and the facilities. And per week, there's a fee of about forty to sixty dollars based on Garbage to Garden's first compost audit, and compost pickup fees, and there's also offset trash hauling fees, and there's also finished compost for high school courtyard garden that we have, which is used by the Life Skills to Grow Food and by Adult Ed for adult gardening workshops, which is really cool. And we're planning on using the finished compost for the new Wentworth School Garden as well, and an education for us all about composting and...
So, here's our audit so far. It's a bit hard to see, but basically, the first couple pickups, we had more frequently, and there were, there was a greater amount of compostable biomass in the pickup, and as time went on, what happened is, at first, there was such a big push, and we were so excited, and we're still very excited, but students were especially caught up in all the new, like, energy of this new system, and you know, we were passing out bracelets, it's just so exciting, so a lot more people were kind of caught up in the energy of getting this program going. We also had found some biodegradable trays just in the kitchen, and the kitchen staff were like, "Hey, look what we found," and we're like, "Sweet, awesome," so we used them for a few days. And now unfortunately, we are back to styrofoam because of the price difference, and we just don't have any more biodegradable trays at the moment. So, that's why the numbers dropped down for, as far as the weight goes. And it has been, it's been an interesting thing trying to get students figuring out how to make sure that they still are very excited about this, as excited as we are, because sometimes after a while, understandably, it can kind of taper out, but we are definitely working on getting the energy back up.
There's some challenges that we have had, is the mixed paper products, which are mixed, and some are compostable, some are not compostable, and that sort of adds to the confusion that students have, and the styrofoam and plastic and plastic coated paper products, which are not good for composting and not good for the environment either, really. We're trying to encourage new habits and behaviors among staff and students, because it is a new system, and students are unfamiliar with it, and that's one of the things we're trying to do, is encourage new habits and actions of responsibility over convenience for them, and especially like getting them up and composting early is another thing. And so, we, basically the main thing is, we're just trying to educate them, and we've had Ecos members monitoring the bins, giving up their lunches to do that, which is really great of them. And we've had a lot of good feedback from collaborators and data collection and the like.
So, we definitely have some goals for the future. We learned a little more about our waste system in undertaking this project. We really, we've always had the goal, kind of as a club, of eliminating styrofoam, because it never decomposes, and it's just, as a product, really bad for the planet. We also like to eliminate plastic and plastic coated paper products, and possibly get a hundred percent compostable lunchroom products, so that a student could go up with their tray and food and just put all of the biomass right into the compost to return those nutrients to the earth. We'd like to get a hundred percent of students composting. We're seeing an okay, a fair rate of students composting now, but we could definitely use more people onboard. And we are also thinking about upgrading our sorting system to something a little more permanent, to help with, to help get zero contamination. I don't know if anybody's been to Whole Foods and seen the sorting system they have there, but that's actually really effective. We want to get something like that eventually. And we're going to analyze the cost savings, as far as how much we've saved in terms of trash pickup, because food does weigh a lot, and so, in having this alternative way of disposing of our food waste, we are saving money on the garbage collection end. And we'd really love to replicate this in other Scarborough schools, help out with the younger kids, and kind of teach them about helping the earth and composting, and knowing really where their waste actually does go. And of course, we'd like to get more compost for our school gardens, and we're really excited to get the first batch of compost back, which we'll be getting soon, and we'll be using it very soon. It's gonna be great for the plant, we're really excited.
The people we'd like to thank for getting us this far, we have Mr. Jepson and Mr. Creach for helping us and letting us give it a go, and Ms. Campbell and Ms. Duma from the Nutrition Services for researching and composting the kitchen products for us, and Mr. O'Rourke and the lunchroom custodians for their extra work and exceptional feedback for our system. Ms. Coon and Ms. Catch for believing in us, and Sean and Kendall, and the rest of the staff from Garbage to Garden, students of SHS for embracing this and letting the seeds of change be planted, and our own Ecos members and officers. Some of them couldn't be here today, but they took on bin monitoring shifts, they made posters, and they presented at the assembly, and they donated valuable feedback and their time and effort into letting this come about.
There you just want to say thanks again for the opportunity to share everything we've been doing so far. And if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You have questions?
I do have a question. As much as I think it's very admirable to go to one hundred percent compostable, compostable lunch products, and I think we need to be there for sure, if the costs really are too high to do it all at once, what would you suggest would be the next step? If you could take one thing out of the mix, what would it be?
Well, right now, I'd say definitely styrofoam trays, because that's just, I mean, you look at the trash can, you just see this big pile of styrofoam, and it's just this huge mass of styrofoam going into landfills. So, that would be really, really fantastic, and that would be probably maybe fifty to eighty percent of the waste matter that is in the trash that could be compostable is probably the styrofoam trays.
So, sort of piggy, piggybacking off of Chris's question, have you checked into any cost differentiation between if we stopped using styrofoam and went to the compostable, you know, cardboardy kind of thing instead?
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Dumas has been really helpful in, in kind of checking online and seeing what kinds of things are offered. As of right now, it is, it does cost considerably more per tray, I think maybe something like ten cents more per tray, eleven cents more per tray.
That's quite a bit.
It is, yeah, but I think as soon as the cost breaks, I think the company that we get our paperware and our styrofoam from, I think they're kind of gearing more toward environmentally friendly products. So, the plan was to, as soon as the cost breaks even with the styrofoam, to switch right over, but of course, the sooner the better, so.
Okay, thank you. And so, one more question. The compost, you say, so all of the materials, food materials that you guys put into the bins now will come back to you, or is that something that they compost everybody's, and then they give you back X squares or X number of yards of that material?
Yeah, so it all goes to one great big compost heap, which is great, because then, you know, you're getting even share of nutrients, because, I mean, if we had compost just solely based on pizza, it would not really be... So, you know, that gets everybody's kitchen waste, like food waste all together. And, yeah, and then we're gonna get that healthy compost back.
So, it's a healthy mixture of everything that came from the high school, and maybe some nice, you know, additional things from some other people's homes.
Right, that's a, that's a good question.
Perfect. All right, who else? All right, I'll let Jody go, and then...
I was just gonna ask for a few tips that you could give the general public on what they could do at home that might be easy in their own kitchens.
As far as composting, or as far as just environmental friendliness in general?
Um, composting.
Um, yeah, well, it's, it's not hard to start your own composting bin, composting heap, if you have backyard space available for that, but if you don't, Garbage to Garden is actually looking at Scarborough as a prospective town for curbside pickup, which is really exciting. So, maybe in the fall, next year's Ecos officers might start possibly a project in which they might get households in Scarborough excited about that. But, yeah, it's definitely super important to know where your food waste is going, so it'd be really great.
It might be better. We'd be able to hear you if you went onto the microphone.
Yes, I just wanted to say that Public Works is gonna be offering compost, home compost bins that you can purchase. I think they're gonna be advertising that shortly. And at Adult Ed, we're hoping to find a teacher to teach a composting, home composting class in the fall, so hopefully the people will go for that.
Donna?
So, where did the idea originate? Who, who talked about this first and got some movement going?
Um, well, I had the idea originally, maybe it was last fall or something, but I just really, you know, I mean, it was just something that I was really excited about, compost at home, and it just seemed like, you know, we have all this food waste at our school, it'd be so cool to just kind of get everyone a little more conscious about, about food waste and about the environment in general, and so...
What'd you do to get it started?
Um, I started by contacting different companies, and just speaking to, really, Ms. Eddy's been amazing at helping me just figure out what to do, and all the officers have worked together, and we've really worked together as a club, and kind of as time goes on, really kind of collaborated and figured out how to get this going. And just the momentum really started building up once the energy started going, so it's been pretty cool.
Well, thank you. That's wonderful, and thank you to all the students that are involved, as well as you, Terry, for the work that you do with the group. You know, it's about education, and you're educating the students about how to do this and why it's important, so your work is really valued in this, that makes a significant contribution to our schools and to our community. You may be the teacher's course, the course that's trying to be offered, so, so don't forget, get your name in there.
I have another question that came from Thomas coming from...
Um, yeah, I just, kind of a two-part question for you guys. How close are we to broadening this program to the other five facilities in Scarborough, and what barriers are you facing that we can remove for you to make sure that happens faster?
Um, we really appreciate that. I'm not really sure, we've been focusing a whole lot on getting it successful in our school, but I think it, I don't think it would be that hard to get it spread to other schools. I think the main thing is just, once something like this gets kickstarted, and you have somebody who's just gonna make sure that it gets, it gets going, then, you know, just contacting people, figuring out who to contact, and what needs to happen, just as far as like red tape and stuff, just to make sure that we can get something like this going. So, that's definitely a future goal of ours.
Well, I would look forward to maybe hearing a follow-up report either at the, maybe the end of this year is a little too soon, but maybe next year, when you guys are ready to branch out, come back, let us know what we need to do, because I think the program is fantastic, and if we can get down to the younger kids and get them exposed to it faster, I think that's really where the success is gonna start coming. So, by the time they get to the high school, it's second nature for them, absolutely.
And I was gonna say, the students have only been at this six weeks, so it's brand new to us.
That's impressive.
But one of the biggest barriers we're finding is the whole confusion with the paper products. We've got, half the paper products are coated with a plastic, that means it's not compostable. The other half of the paper products are coated with wax, that means they are compostable. And if you look at them, you really can't tell the difference. They're both a little shiny, and the only way to do the difference is to scratch with a thumb and see if you can pull the wax off, and we're not gonna have the students doing that. So, unfortunately, when they have a paper product, and they're thinking, "Oh, if it grows, it goes," wait a minute, oh, it doesn't go, because it's, I guess we can't use paper products, because there's too much confusion. So, fantastic thing would be to get everything uniform with the paper products, and of course, it's the biggest thing for environmentalists, get rid of that styrofoam at some point, and see if we can't offset the costs of, you know, the trash fees and whatnot to pay for some of these things maybe.
Thank you.
Now, this is just one project of Ecos. How old is the Ecos Club? Because I'm thinking it's six, eight, ten years old.
I'm not sure.
No, that's okay.
Probably at least seven or eight years old.
Somebody at the high school will know. I don't recall, but I do remember that it started several years ago, and they started with, they got the bins for the paper, and that's how, and as you see the students going around at the end of the day, picking up the paper at the high school, so...
The students are still doing that, that's their signature project, which is every Friday afternoon, collecting cans and bottles and paper. The cans and bottles, actually, the collection of that is what's helping us pay for our part of the composting, our half, so...
The reason I raise the issue is that I think it's important for people in town to know that it didn't start with the composting. This is an evolution, and it all came about with the students. And I appreciate it, thank you.
Is everyone all set?
Just a question, Patrick and Hannah are both seniors, Mr. Chiazo, so they won't be coming back probably, but I'm sort of curious, and I don't know about Andrew, are you a senior as well, a junior? Okay, so I'll just direct this to Hannah and Andrew. What are your plans for next year?
I mean, I'm...
If you wish to share them.
Things like, things like after high school? I mean, I am going to, I'm going to college, and I am, and I am planning on doing some sort of study in the environment work. Like, I'm looking at some really great environmental schools, and they've all really appealed to me, and I think I can make an even greater difference there too, also, and, yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, I am considering right now, I have to make the decision by May 1st, but I'm considering taking a year to go, to Go Woofing, which is world-class opportunities on organic farms, and go traveling and exploring, and really get a better stance of humanity, and how, how to best help just the global cause of equality, and I'm really into activism, and I don't know whether it's gonna be political or environmental, but I'm definitely gonna keep doing conservation work, maybe journalism, but I'm going to college either in the fall or after a year off, so I'm really, really excited about that.
Perhaps, Dr. Entwistle, we could hire a consultant to help us. I'm just saying.
Well, we do have Andrew who will come back and...
Yeah, and we're really excited, Andrew and Delia are the juniors, the other two officers, our fifth officer is also a senior, and they've, they're really, they're gonna do a fantastic job next year, so...
Well, we appreciate you coming, thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you for having us.
I do, I just have to find it. Just make sure I have it here. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
As you can imagine, we've been busy preparing for our Saturday workshop, that is the workshop for the school board. Am I still in your thunder?
No, feel free.
Okay. That's the workshop where the leadership council and the school board joins as a strategic leadership team to go painstakingly through the budget. The budget was in, is in its first reading, is continuing to evolve. That is a public meeting, and that is happening this Saturday, starting at eight thirty. Some great news that we've received in terms of the Eight Corners School, and I'll just read it to you. On behalf of the entire team of the Maine Department of Education, congratulations to you, Anne Lovejoy, and your staff, the Eight Corners staff and students for being named High Progress Reward School under Maine's new Elementary Secondary Act Accountability System. The designation achieved by only eighteen other Maine schools recognizes that Eight Corners Elementary School has consistently demonstrated high progress towards meeting state and federal accountability standards for English language arts and mathematics. Additionally, Eight Corners Elementary School is among the fifteen percent of Title I schools demonstrating the greatest level of improvement on school achievement and progress, progress lists over a three-year period, and demonstrating the highest three-year averages among those with high progress. As well, the school is meeting or exceeding annual measurable objectives in math or reading for the whole school or super subgroup, and is making sufficient progress on other annual measurable objectives for the whole school and super subgroup, and is meeting or exceeding the school's average daily attendance targets for grades three through, for grades three through eight, or the graduation rate for the whole school. So, this is really quite an accomplishment, quite a growth that's been demonstrated by the students, and certainly, congratulations to Anne Lovejoy for her good leadership, and to the faculty there for their good work. One last piece in terms of my report... One last piece in terms of my report, uh, relates to, uh, the retirement of Ann Mary Dexter. Um, I believe that you all know about that, but I would be remiss if I didn't, um, acknowledge that in public. Um, she has served as principal Scarborough Elementary, in the Scarborough Elementary Schools for twenty-seven years. Um, she is now, um, we are just no competition, however, between, um, her staying here with us and, and moving on to, uh, spending her energy and her high levels of excitement involved with her family. She has a granddaughter, and she has two other grandchildren who are on the way in July and August. So, um, we'll have an opportunity to celebrate her accomplishments as we get through these next couple of months, but I, I did want to, um, include that in my report. And that is my report for the evening. Yes, I, that's under, um, that's under recognition.
Thank you very much for your report, and now we have the chair's report. That would be me. Um, so on March twentieth, we, um, had an MSMA, which is the Maine School Management Association Boardmanship Workshop here, um, in Chamber C, and that was great. We had two representatives come down from the Maine School Management Association, worked with us on our roles and responsibilities as, as board members. Found it quite beneficial, um, it's a good workshop. I hope everyone else found it beneficial as well. Um, then on March twenty-fourth, several board members and myself, along with Monique Culbertson, our Director of Curriculum, and Dr. Entwistle, attended the first day at the State House. Um, we met with several of our local legislators and had some conversations, and, uh, that was a interesting event as well. So, um, lots going on there, and hopefully the state doesn't keep cutting our funding. So that was sort of one of our missions, to discuss that with our legislators, um, ever so briefly that we were able to meet with them, but we did meet with them, so it was, it was good. Um, and then I have my usual Wentworth update. We have the second floor is at the punch list stage. Um, the floor waxing begins next week on our second floor. Building commissioning continues to go well. The gym floor install begins next week. I'm sure that's of interest to many. Um, the flooring's being installed as well on the first floor. All the drywall is nearing completion, and everything appears to be on schedule and still under budget as we had hoped for. Um, we have some upcoming dates. Again, I'll reiterate what Dr. Entwistle said. We have our Saturday, um, School Board and Leadership Council Budget Workshop, uh, this Saturday, which is two days from now, begins at eight thirty in the morning. I believe all of the board will be in attendance. And we also have an invite out to the Town Council, um, that's been on our budget calendar for quite some time, and we're hoping that they will attend as well, so that they can hear about all of, uh, the walkthrough on the budget, and again, that begins at eight thirty. Then we have another upcoming date, which would be a seven PM Wednesday, which is an odd day for us, which is April sixteenth, which will be the Joint Town Council and School, School Board Public Hearing on our budget. So we're encouraging all members of the board, as well as all members of the school public and general public, to come out and, um, speak concerning the school budget. So that wraps it up for me. Now, I will go on to eight point O. We have recognition this evening. I'll turn this back to Dr. Entwistle.
And tonight I have a few items of recognition. Um, I believe that, um, the three first ones are coming out of the middle school. Um, we want to recognize Doug Bennett and the Red Storm Strikes Out Cancer Team. This team consists of students and staff and families, um, and they were recently recognized as the top group donator for Mary's Walk. Team raised fourteen thousand dollars this year, with a five-year grand total donation of seventy thousand dollars, which is incredible. The money earned will stay locally and will be, and will benefit the Maine Cancer Foundation. Second item is, uh, in recognition of Jack Clark, seventh grade student, and he is the winner of the Middle School National Geographic Geography B. Hold on, winner of the middle, uh, okay. He's gonna compete now against other students. Okay, so I don't know if he is the winner of the National Geographic, um, Geography B. Anyway, Jack is doing really a good job. Hold on, yeah. Yeah, because it sounds as though it's like he's the winner of the entire national thing, which I, I think he could be, and he might, I hope that he will be, but I think right now he's gonna compete against other students in the state competition. He's gotta get the state thing first, up in Farmington, Maine. He reached the state final after, uh, finishing first in a very competitive match. This was a match against his middle school peers, answering seven out of seven questions correct, completing an exam to qualify for the state final. Do I have that right, Mrs. Hathorn? Okay, thank you. And Jack is one of a hundred students in the state to be selected for this competition. Think the thing that threw me off was the national, it's a National Geographic Geography B. Um, so, uh, and then last, um, we have Mr. Currier and, um, Mrs. Hathorn here. They have escorted, um, one of our staff members, perhaps even against her will, um, and I will, uh, let them, uh, introduce you to, um, one of our, uh, staff members, but a special guest tonight for recognition, um, Mrs. Hathorn.
So Mr. Currier and I would like to recognize Lisa Blaze Manning. Uh, Lisa is one of the trailblazers in improving the quality of girls' basketball in Maine. She is in the first class of inductees in the recently fo- uh, formed Maine Basketball Hall of Fame. Um, Dave, would you like to say a few words, since you're from the same town?
As I was growing up, Mrs. Manning, back then Mrs. Blaze, was an icon for basketball, and, uh, other schools and other athletes across the state compared themselves to Mrs. Blaze, uh, or Ms. Blaze. And, uh, one of the things that always stood out was that she was very well skilled, very highly skilled, a tremendous competitor, but a wonderful sportsman. So, uh, I'm very pleased to be able to help recognize her for some, of her contributions to the, the sport of basketball, and also contributions to our, our community as well.
So Lisa led Westbrook to four straight Class A titles. She then became a four-year starter at Old Dominion, helping her team win the NCAA title. Lisa coaches field hockey, basketball, and track at Scarborough High School. She is an invaluable member of our middle school team, and Dave and I could not live without her in our office. So, uh, we congratulate Lisa. She's a fabulous person.
I must say that I was privileged to be a basketball official when Lisa was playing, and, uh, I have said for years that, that she is without doubt the finest female basketball player that this state has ever seen. And along with her skills and sportsmanship, she, I, I won't say she was driven, but it was close to being driven to be the best, to be the best teammate she could be. When she played basketball, I don't ever recall an official who had ever done anything but praise her skills and her participation. And she never reacted when the whistle was blown against her or against her team. She was the ultimate and consummate sportswoman. And I am so proud that, that she is being inducted, and so proud that she lives and works in Scarborough. And I'm hoping that one day her husband will be inducted, because he was one of the finest basketball officials that I've seen and worked with as well.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Excellent. And I have tickets. Anybody wants to know how to get tickets, I'll let you know.
Thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it.
We have just recently, um, completed Read Across America, uh, which, uh, is a, a very, uh, big deal in the primary schools. And I know that many of us sitting here, um, were out in about, and, and, and sitting out here, um, as well. Mr. Creech, I believe that you were out reading, weren't you? Indeed. Um, so we wanted to, uh, share with you, um, a, a, a little, uh, video that, that captures some of the excitement of, I think it's the excitement of the readers more so than the audience, but, um, why don't you roll that, Kelly?
Especially when you go up to the next couple of grades, you have your own desk. The kids in Mr. McPatrick's class have messy desks. Here's where we are, and China is all the way over here in the Big Island.
Air by parachute, Nora, Norton, Matt and Newt. And all of that, open me, I'll ask the order. Well, an hour or so later, the bug heard a squeak. Yes, sir. It was bedtime for the little red chickens. All right, sister, I'll be one of your favorites, and of course, you are not going to interrupt. Now tell me about your special family, what's the name of it? About me? Well, there is so much I want to tell you about me. I am a princess. Got a lesson in it, what we call it, got a moral to this story. So see if you, as you listen, that I tell you the story. So, what does a tiger do? Medicine and rope, wire and flea powder, they packed scum for protection. This apartment even packed a bottle of dried milk, just in case the panda was a baby.
Wow, that was great. Well, thank you. All right, and we have no students this evening, so I'm imagining there is no student representative to report. Um, we are going to move on to new business. We have nine point one, we have the minutes of February twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Move approval is printed? Second.
Any questions, corrections, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of minutes as presented from February twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. Seven. So moved. Uh, then we have the minutes of March sixth, two thousand fourteen.
Move approval is printed? Second.
Omissions, corrections, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented of March sixth, two thousand fourteen. Seven. Thank you very much. Uh, nine point three, this will be, I will turn this over to Dr. Entwistle.
Right, this is, um, a request, uh, to allow Blue Point School to, uh, receive a grant valued at five, five hundred dollars from Kitchen Gardeners International. It's the So It Forward Grant, which provides our school garden team with resources to help with irrigation and, um, expansion of their school garden. I'd recommend approval.
All right, so will the board this evening?
Move approval? Second.
Any questions, comments? I'd like to make one. Thank you very much to the Kitchen Gardeners International, um, all in favor then of approval as presented. Seven. So moved. Thank you. Again, to Kitchen Gardeners International. I know they've been active in some other things that we've done at various schools, so, much appreciated. All right, then we have nine point four, and that would be to consider, uh, the School Board Contingency Fund as a source to defray academic decathlon travel expenses. So will the board this evening?
I have a motion to make that, um, I would request the board use, uh, take two thousand dollars out of the contingency, for board contingency fund, to, um, support the academic decathlon team, to pay for the coaches, lots of coaches' travel expenses.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Uh, well, all right, I'll start. Did you have a comment, Jane, first, since you were the one who made the motion?
I, I can, wait a minute. Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. Um, first, um, we all know our Scarborough Academic Decathlon Team performed really well this year. This is the, the twenty-fifth anniversary, became state champion, and even though it sounds like a long time, it's going again and again. We have done it past ten years, but it haven't been, it's really hard work for these kids, and they have competition from Bengal and from, um, Kanabunk that, um, who were aiming at, you know, surpass them, and they have the energy to perform and to do their best. And so, right now, um, fortunately, you know, this winning comes with a little bit of burden, which is a challenge, which is the, uh, get this privilege to travel to the, uh, Haw- Hawaii for this national competition, and represent our town and our schools and our state. So, uh, so far, our school haven't been able to allocate any funding to support them, and, uh, even though I thi- think that's something we can look at in the future, however, right now, we don't, um, uh, we don't have anything budgeted to support the team, uh, in any way we, you know, we could, and, um, I think it's a sanction activity, and we support them all the way to the state, and now they are going to next stage, and I think our schools, I know it's a big expense, but in terms of support and pay for at least, you know, some, uh, give some money to, uh, show this, support this academic decathlon team, I think is what we, is appropriate, and alleviate the funding efforts, is they have twenty-one thousand dollars to raise. Uh, and, um, I think the, if we can support, uh, showing some real, you know, financial support in terms of the coaches' travel expenses, that will, you know, send a message to the team, and we are, you know, we are behind them, and so, uh, hopefully in the future, they don't, their trip, don't always have to be nimble, because you don't know if they're gonna have enough money or not, but, um, right now, I think that's what we can do, is, uh, take some money from the contingency fund to help with the extra travel expenses.
Jackie, I saw you with your hand up.
Yes. For years I have said that if we're going to have these activities, then we need to support them, and, uh, we, we spend tremendous amounts of money, uh, on athletics, and, uh, one of the reasons that we had a board contingency fund to begin with was for just these activities. We, we used to have Odyssey of the Mind, for example, which was, was a activity that was at the Wentworth School, and when that teacher retired, we never had another Odyssey of the Mind, but those youngsters went to state competitions. As you can see from past years, we've had speech and debate, uh, people who have gone out of state to represent our, our community and our state. And early on, when we, uh, first had academic decathlon, that was one of the reasons we had a contingency, because the national competitions have always been out of state. And I was appalled last year when we gave so very little, and, uh, I have two questions. Uh, I support the two thousand dollar donation, by the way. I, I would like to know how much is currently in the contingency fund, and what is... I, I would like to know how much is currently in the contingency fund, and what is left that we anticipate spending it on?
I can answer that. We, at our finance committee meeting before this, that was a question that was directed to our business manager, Kate Bolton. The response was there is ten thousand dollars sitting in the contingency fund. By definition, the contingency fund is there if we run over in other aspects of funding, such as dues and fees, or other activities of the board, it's there as a mechanism to prevent us from having to pull money from other budget items. So, it's there as, in essence, as, as an emergency backup should we overspend any of our other account lines.
And, and I would challenge that interpretation, that the Board Contingency Fund is simply that, discretionary monies that the board can use for just such things as the Academic Decathlon.
Donna?
So, um, Dr. Twistle, um, we received from Kate Bolton some information at the finance meeting that maybe hasn't been shared with the full board, and I was wondering if you would be willing to just review that information, not only the, the concept of the contingency fund, but as it, as it also implicates any additional funds that are separate contingency monies, so that the board fully understands two sources of funding for this kind of a event.
Um, I can do that, I, I'm sure that Kate might be able to do it better, but what was shared with the finance committee was first, the expenses that are related to this travel, this competition that is in, the national competition, which is in Hawaii, and, and basically, it looks to be, um, a, a cost of approximately twenty one thousand one hundred and fifty some odd dollars. It looks as though funds available right now are about seventeen thousand five hundred, so the, so the unpaid, unpaid balance is really three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty four cents, as Kate has calculated it, and as the, um, as the donations have come in. I think that also provided to the, to the finance committee is some comparative expenses for high school clubs that are paid through the general fund. Academic Decathlon is, is one of them, Speech and Debate is the second, Jazz Bands is the third, One Act Plays is, is another, and what Kate did was a bit of an analysis in terms of what is paid for, which is stipends, dues and fees, and materials that are paid through the general fund, and she provides a comparative analysis in terms of the total expenditure and the per pupil expenditure, and, and basically has, I would say, ranked them from highest at five hundred and forty one dollars for, per, per student for Academic Decathlon, down to three hundred and nine dollars per student for Jazz Band. The, um, the other piece that was provided to the, the finance committee is the history from two thousand seven through till last year of the expenditures, or the donations from the School Board Contingency Account, and she shows a five thousand dollar Academic Decathlon Team contribution in the two thousand seven, eight year, a five thousand dollar donation again to Academic Decathlon in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, along with a one thousand dollar National History Day competition donation. In two thousand nine, ten, there were two, two thousand dollar donations made out of the contingency fund, Academic Decathlon and Speech and Debate Teams were the recipients. In twenty ten, eleven, there was a one thousand dollar Speech and Debate Team donation and a two thousand dollar Academic Decathlon Team donation. Twenty eleven, twelve, it was significantly adjusted, and that was two hundred and twenty five dollars that was actually made to the Scarborough Education Foundation, and that was to help get the Spelling Bee fundraiser off the ground, and there's nothing to any school clubs in twenty eleven, twenty eleven, twenty twelve. Twenty twelve and thirteen, there was another two hundred and twenty five dollars of donation made to the Scarborough Education Foundation, and two hundred and fifty dollars in that year, which was last year, for Academic Decathlon. That was the material that was shared, uh, by Mrs. Bolton.
Can I just make one comment, just so everybody knows, the Spelling Bee fundraiser for the Scarborough Education Foundation, that was to put our board team in, as a participant. So, it wasn't a, I want to say a direct donation, but it was a donation so that we could actually participate in the event that evening, and so, we were not successful in winning that competition. We have gone back a second time, and hopefully, if they continue to do it a third time, to try to figure out how to spell the word pomelo, so, anyway.
Pomelo.
That's you, Donna.
So, just to clarify, I, there's, there's been three sources of monies for events for Academic Decathlon. One is that families and students raise money, and a separate one is some money coming from the general fund to Academic Decathlon, Speech and Debate, Jazz Band, One Act Play, and in addition to that, requests from the board out of what we call this contingency fund, or whatever, whatever line we're calling that. And it, it appears on this document here that there has been some historic support for that, as Jackie had mentioned, in the past. Is that, does that clarify, am I correct in understanding all of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jody?
Is there a boosters club for, for the Academic Decathlon? It seems as though there's been a history of, of winning and succeeding, and I'm just wondering if there's, I know a lot of, um, other clubs around town have a boosters club that they do fundraising throughout the year, and I didn't know if that-
Yeah, I, I can answer that, was also a question that was presented to Mrs. Bolton, to ask if there was a, another fundraising group. There currently is not a registered booster organization for the Academic Decathlon Team, and the thought is because it is such a frequent turnover from year to year, unlike a sport activity or, or another activity where you have maybe four years of congruent participation, the Academic Decathlon Team almost has a new team, I believe, every year, so they don't have a well-established booster organization that, that's been registered and, and is fundraising.
Donna?
And under, other than the band, is there a booster group for Speech and Debate and One Act Plays, where numbers of students are very low in terms of participation, and probably high turnover, with who's going to be in the play, et cetera?
No. I know that the, obviously, the music boosters, you know, is, is a very large booster organization, well organized, and they certainly do various fundraisers for the band program, but I don't know of, if there's anything with Speech and Debate or One Act Play, well, the One Act Play might be part of the, um, booster of the theater arm of the organization, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I don't, I don't know.
Because they have a theater booster program. Jackie?
Oak Hill Players-
Oh, that's what I meant, okay, I know.
Has, has a fund that, out of which they pay part of, of the expense of, but the chorea- choreographer and whomever provides the music, if there's live music, and, uh, we pay, I think, for the director, but there are other individuals associated to come out of the, the funds raised on tickets, and, and it is my understanding that they, we could look at the audit, actually, there's an ongoing fund for the Oak Hill Players that helps them start up for the next production. I don't believe that has anything to do with the One Act Plays.
Oh, okay.
Um, I guess I need a, someone to tell me what the line item in the budget is intended for, not what it's been used for, but what is the, what is the intention for this, this account, this money that's set aside in the budget every year?
If I may, again, according to Mrs. Bolton, the contingency fund, from an accounting standpoint, is a reserve fund in case we go over on other line items like dues and fees, or if we have, um, let's say, seminars that we participate in, that-
As a board, that is-
As a board, that's my understanding of it, yes.
Would that be an accurate portrayal, Dr. Ent? I just want to make sure I throw that out.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, two, just two points. One is that, um, a contingency fund by its very nature is for unanticipated expenses and, and emergencies, if you will. This, this board has historically, as Miss Perry said, has, has had this, I don't know for how many years. When I arrived on the scene, I indicated to the board that I was uncomfortable that, that we had a contingency, a contingency fund, or discretionary fund, that would be used by the school board to provide sort of very selective, um, support for, for things that really should be done through the budget process. And my sense is that at, at least at one point, um, uh, the response was, well, that's probably a direction that we should go, and you could see that the, the donations have, have decreased significantly from, in the last couple of years, anyway. The other statement that I would make is that, um, it, while it's only been, this is only the third, actually, in Cape Elizabeth as well, when, when I was on the school board, with those, with the places that I've been involved in, I've never really seen a discretionary, discretionary account that would be used in this way by, by a school board. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's right or it's wrong, it's just, it seems to me that it's a bit unusual.
I have Kelly, then I have Jody, then I have Chris, did I have anybody else over here, Jane? Okay, so, let's just go down, and we'll head around.
I guess my difficulty with it is, and I've talked about it before, that I was on the team in the early nineties, and back in the day, it was not a lock that Scarborough was going to win. For the early years, it kind of toggled back and forth with Monmouth Academy, so you weren't ever confident going into the finals you were going to win. Scarborough's kind of, and not kind of, has been incredibly dominant in the state competition, so, I have, I, my struggle comes from, you've known it Hawaii for four years, three years, and so, if you're anticipating winning, there should have been extra fundraising going. Now, again, the students and the teams that are working hard all year don't have a choice about where the national competition is, so that's the other side of me saying, it's not their fault, it's in Hawaii, they don't get to vote on where it is, it would be a lot cheaper for everyone in Maine, if it was in Portland, but they don't get to choose it. I went on the website for USAD, and next year it's California, the year after is Alaska, the year after that's Wisconsin, so they do publish the locations four years in advance. I think going forward, ideally, there would be some sort of activities and athletics contingency fund, that would be more appropriate usage of money for this kind of thing, instead of coming from us. So, I'm, I'm absolutely torn up about how to handle this, because this trip is happening right now, and we have money right now, it's not most likely, and I, I think probably not an appropriate usage of the money, but we have it, and it's about to be turned over into the general fund, so, anyway, that's just me. And my internal struggles sharing with everyone about that, but, I just wanted you to know that, everyone, I guess.
We appreciate the internal struggles, the internal struggles, so, um, Jody?
And I, I, for me, I feel bad, because these kids have worked very hard, and you would hate to see this not succeed and, and, and get the funding that it needs, but my fear is, we open ourselves up to the flush fund for any group out there that wants to approach us for need, and that's not, from what I'm understanding, is not what this contingency fund is for. I'm not sure that we'll ever go over our dues and fees by ten thousand dollars, I don't know that that's necessary, but how do we explain to the next group why we can't afford to send them somewhere, or what makes their accomplishment any less important to them than this does to these kids? So, I, I just fear that it opens up a can of worms for us to become the flush fund to anybody and everybody out there, but, I mean, it's a great accomplishment, and these kid, you know, these kids have worked hard, and-
However you want.
You, yeah, you were a very long-
Down to the right there?
You were the, I, you were the last one, I was just waiting.
I got Jackie down there as well, so.
I want to reiterate that that fund was established for this very reason, because we didn't know from year to year if the Academic Decathlon Team was going to win the state competition, if the Speech and Debate Team was going to be invited to the Nationals, if the geography folks were going to be invited to go to Washington, D.C. We didn't know any of those things on an annual basis, so it was decided to put aside ten thousand dollars to fund these things when they occurred. Now, maybe the correct term is exactly that, discretionary funds to send teams who have won state competitions. I can only tell you that that's why the fund was established, because when I first came on the board, we had a contingency, contingency fund that was one percent of the budget to cover emergencies, such as a boiler going, or a roof going, or, and we had that for a number of years, until the town council said, you don't need that. Town council has funds if there is that kind of an emergency, so we didn't have it any longer as one percent of the budget. And, as I say, it was when the Academic Decathlon, after the Academic Decathlon won their first national competition, and the year after that, the Speech and Debate won their competition, that the board decided to set aside funds to cover these contingencies. I don't care what you call it, the money's there.
So, I think if, if that is what this fund is for, then we need to make sure everyone understands that, because it sounds like Kate Bolton is saying that it's a different, it's to be used in a different manner-
Can, can I, I mean-
Than what, than what Jackie remembers-
Actually, that's not what Kate said.
Wait, one second.
Than what Jackie is saying that it was originally intended for. It, it sounds like two very different funds.
No.
I answered you that-
Don't interrupt her.
I'm sorry.
Wait, one second. Are you finished? Okay. Jane?
I just want to answer that question you were talking about, uh, that's not exactly what Kate said at the finance committee meeting, I think several of us were there. Kate, the Kate says, by accounting contingency fund is for unexpected expenses, that's what George just presented to us. Only when the, Chris asked, you know, what, what else can it possibly use, you know, if we run, and he said that it can be used if we use it, but it's unlikely, we never had that before, so, that is, last year, we used four hundred seventy five dollars for some, well, yes, that, I think, for two hundred twenty five dollars, it has never been used for any other purpose before. This money is there for, was set, oriented by this purpose, it has been just shutting down past two years for, I don't know what this is really designed for, but that's not the purpose, as Jackie said, wait a minute, and I also-
Okay, oop, sorry, I thought you were-
I'm not finished yet, also, I want to answer another, um, question that, um, Katie raised, is, these kids have been raising, working hard, raise money.
I know.
Seventeen thousand dollars, doesn't come in overnight, and they did not anticipate the cost of flight and hotel was going to be this expensive, they expected like sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand dollars, so, this, it's not something that, you know, they can really, really do much, and a lot, ever since they know they're going, of course, we have, they have made very much effort personally, you had, you know, I have made a hu, you know, big contribution, so it's not something that says they haven't done enough. What it comes back to is, do this board support a program like this, when they are going beyond state level, when they are going beyond, going out of state, we, are we just hanging our hands, says, you know what, we did everything we could until this spot, from there down, the national, it's you, we are putting up- From there on, the national, it's yours, we are not putting any money in there. Right now, in the general fund as budget, that is the case. We hope, looking forward, we can change that. I think it's not something can, you know, since we have do it ten year in a row, it's not hard to budget like a thousand dollars, and sometimes you use it, sometimes you don't, but that's next step. But as it now, we are not supporting, as the school district, these kids at all. And that is, I think, it comes really down to principle. I know somebody is gonna say, "They ha, they can keep raising funds for the next year." Of course, they can do, and they, of course, they're probably gonna have another trip next year. It's gonna be continued effort, but our, our school department, or our board, is not doing anything to support this team. It's not like because they are one team, it's they are being selected, it's because we are supporting a lot of other things, and this activity, I would imagine if somebody go, goes to, to out-of-state competition, we would do some kind of support. And we're not supporting this team in any way, and that is, you know, after, after the state, that is something I think is wrong, and I don't think we, um, ask these kids to put up, you know, pay for their culture travel expenses, and front, you know, and that's extra burden for them. And I think we can, as a school department, do more for these kids, and of course, I think we can do a lot of other things, too. However, you know, when they come, we certainly can make choices, but this is not part of this opening up jammer worm, because this problem has been there year in, year after year, after year.
Okay, I just want to clarify something before this rolls on here. Um, I can see from the sheet that Kate gave, just to clarify what you're saying, is that we have supported it. Now, I'm not saying we've supported it to the national level, but it is being paid for out of fund.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make-
Support until the state level, not the-
Okay. Next, be, that being said, um, a year and a half ago, almost two, in December, um, we were curtailed from the state money. And we took five thousand dollars, that was a conscious decision on the board's part, to take five thousand dollars from the contingency fund to try to offset some of the money that we were losing from the state. We had some other windfalls that came through, so, we didn't fare as poorly as we could have, but, that being said, that's sort of one of the things that we said, "Oh, my gosh, we need to use this." So, just so you know that, I don't, it was before you were on the board, but some others were here, and I just wanted to make those two points, and now we'll move down this way. I have Chris and I have Kelly, so you two can-
Well, I just, I don't, um, appreciate the characterization that we either care about the team and want to support them, or we don't. I think a lot of us are having trouble with, is it an appropriate use of this fund? And if we are, I mean, that is what a lot of the questions are about. If this is what it was intended for, I just, I, I'm curious, and maybe Jackie knows, but why it wasn't as, put as a line item in the academic, I mean, uh, in the athletics and activities budget, instead of school board discretionary fund? Because then it does make us the bad guys, or the good guys, to any group that might need extra funding. And I just want to be clear that I absolutely know that they've been fundraising all the time, I mean, I used to drag the garbage bag of stinky cans and bottles up and down the street begging for cans for the decathlon. I know that they fundraise all year long. It's just, um, it's, I just want to be sure that we're making an appropriate use of funds, because that's our responsibility, and I don't think it should be characterized as we either support the team or we don't. And to say that the school, and the school department doesn't support the team at all is not true, based on the dollars spent per student. I mean, it's absolutely being supported. And I, I don't think it's an extra burden to have to fundraise for the coaches, because without the coaches, the kids couldn't go. They wouldn't be where they are, those coaches work tirelessly, year round, in addition to the hours the kids put in, the coaches are putting in extra hours. So, I don't think to say it's not the students' or the family's responsibility, because they wouldn't be there in the position of going to a national competition without the coaches. So, I think it's a package deal. The kids are going, the coaches go, and you gotta know that from the start. So, I don't, I don't like that parceling either, I don't like, like that, um, it's, it's too hard for the kids to raise for the coaches. Well, it's all for one, they're all part of the same team. You, on the team, everyone's there together, working together all year long. It's not like the coach breezes in or out, the coach is there the entire time. So, I, I, just out of respect for the coaches, don't like that, that separation, to say it should be not their responsibility, the team shouldn't have to pay for the coaches. Yes, I understand that's an easy way to separate out a sum of money, but I don't, I don't like that, um, 'cause they're, they're all in it together.
Right, and Chris, I don't believe you've had your, bye.
Ms. Perry had another question, you can, I, however you want to-
No, I, I just wondered if Kelly wanted me to answer her question.
Oh, all right.
Well, I just, yeah, if you can tell me why it wasn't, I mean, if-
I don't think it was ever thought of, Kelly, remember when this all started, uh, we had an athletic director only. The position of, of athletic and activities director i- is really quite recent, when you think about it. And, uh, I don't think it entered anybody's mind, quite frankly, certainly not in line, and you're correct, I think that's an appropriate place for the money. Let Mr. Creach worry about it.
Ultimately, it's Dr. Enchelso that really has to worry about it, okay.
I have to worry about that.
He's gotta worry about, he's gotta worry about Mr. Creach and everybody else. Okay, Donna?
So, a couple of things, one is that, um, we had some clarification on the money. I do recall that five thousand dollars, was that, did we move that money?
Yes, we did.
And then, did we replace it, or is there, is there ten thousand, or is there five thousand dollars?
Oh, it, we came into a new budget year.
Okay, so that was longer than-
Right.
Okay, I was thinking it was in September.
Full circle, no, we came into a new budget year.
Yeah, if I can add to that, the, the, whatever's left in the contingency fund at the end, my understanding is rolls into the general purpose, rolls into general purpose, so it, then it goes to the benefit of the entire district at that point.
Okay. The other thing is that, so we, we've really got two things here. We have a decision to make tonight on this money, and whether to approve it or not, whatever, each person decides. The second thing is that we should probably, you know, take up this item as a, as a workshop item, where we can really better define, because the board turns over, administration turns over, well, not all the administration turns over, but, you know, and we have new people coming and going all the time, so, we need to define that better.
We've already had that conversation for a future date, for hospital work.
Yeah, if I can, we are, we are taking that very issue up in the finance committee, whether it's a better clarification of the use of the funds, or if it's an elimination of the fund altogether and moved into general purpose or something like that. But we certainly are going to explore, hopefully not putting ourselves in this position again in the future, and whatever decision that is, is discussed in finance will come, I'm sure, before the board collectively for a decision, ultimate decision.
Yeah, and better understanding for future boards.
Absolutely.
As it's written, so.
All right, so, yes.
Okay. I actually have some prepared remarks. When, when, when something is this important, uh, and, and this fundamental, I find it better to organize my thoughts a little bit more, so excuse me if I, if I read from my prepared text here. "I cannot support this motion to transfer additional funds from the board contingency fund to the academic decathlon team to assist them in funding their trip to the national competition in Hawaii. Please do not misunderstand my comments to mean that I do not fully support this team, or that I do not think they are worthy of our full community support. I have made personal contributions to the team in the past, and will continue to do so now and in the future. But this is not a debate on the merits of the academic decathlon team. They are irrefutable facts that these kids work hard. They've reaped the success of their determination and efforts, and continue to represent Scarborough with the greatest distinction. But do any of these facts further distinguish them, or make them more deserving than the cadre of state championship sports teams, or the Jim Dandies, or the One Act Play, or the Lego Robotics Team, or any of the other amazing extracurricular activities that all continue to represent Scarborough at the highest levels of achievement? Ms. Perry posed some very succinct questions to the athletic director, Mr. Legage, in order to get some background information prior to this meeting. I do not wish to steal Ms. Perry's thunder, but I found one particular response from Mr. Legage very poignant. When asked directly, "Why has the activities budget never had a line item for out-of-state trips for debate, academic decathlon, etc.?" Mr. Legage responded, and I quote, "The athletic activities budget has not, since I have been in Scarborough, had money earmarked for any specific program or group to attend a state or national competition. I am not aware if previous budgets ever had money for this sort of expense, but the year before I arrived, until now, we have not. On the athletic side of this, on the athletic side, this has been commonly covered by boosters or student families themselves. And on the activity side, this has typically been accomplished through fundraising. It is my belief, given these tough financial times, when we can't cover essential components of programs in the athletic and activities department, and in fact, have made cuts to programs in the athletic and activities department, that it would be difficult to defend funding a trip of this type." End of quotation. I would concur wholeheartedly with this statement. Does this mean that the school department offers minimal support to the academic decathlon team? On the contrary. Mrs. Bolton, our business manager, has informed us that the school department already funds the academic decathlon team at a cost of approximately four, five hundred and forty-one dollars and eight cents per student, a number which is well above the average cost per pupil for other similar-sized, high school-supported activities, such as speech and debate, the One Act Play, and the Jazz Band. In addition, they receive special assistance by being allowed to use the town credit card to make advanced reservations, advanced travel reservations, a benefit which in essence allows them to finance their travel upfront, and extends their fundraising period for some time after they've completed their travel. In addition to our other duties, Mrs. Bolton has personally devoted time and energy with organizing and arranging the travel for this event. While she assures me that she would do the same to support other activities if she were asked, the fact remains, her time is at a premium now, and we are a full-blown budget season. My fellow board members, this in essence is a policy debate. The real question that I believe is before us is, should the Board of Education be in the dubious position of picking winners that receive funding outside of normal channels, or losers that are denied requests for additional funding because of academic short, uh, excuse me, because of economic shortfalls? In answering this question, I would remind my fellow board members to consider our first operating protocol, which states, "The board will represent the needs and interests of every child in our district. We will stay flexible, endeavor to meet the needs of every student, advocate for adequate and appropriate resources, and remain willing to examine how we can do our job better." I realize that this position may not be a popular one. Being in leadership positions means that sometimes the wisest choice is not necessarily the most popular one. If my fellow board members in this community agree with me, that we should be fully supporting the efforts and achievements of groups such as the academic decathlon team, I would urge them to advocate for increasing the school funding as a whole, and support our continuing efforts for modest, controlled, and sustainable growth, and not bow to the pressure of self-directed special interests. To quote President Kennedy's nineteen sixty-three speech against pork barrel politics, "A rising tide lifts all boats." Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else?
Move the question.
All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor of approving the two thousand dollars to the academic decathlon team from the board contingency fund? Four. All in favor of not-
All opposed.
Oh, all opposed, sorry. All opposed. Three. Two thousand dollars will be, uh, contributed from the board contingency fund, effectiveness in this case, do that, so move. Next on our agenda.
Yes, um, appointments.
Okay, so you have appointments, nine point five, point one, Scarborough High School Athletic Appointments and Middle School.
As updated and presented.
Move approval.
Second?
All right, any questions, comments? I'll make one comment, I noticed that of the, um, appointments that are coming forward before us this evening, several of them have asterisks next to them, which indicate that they're booster funded, um, and then there are several that have double asterisks next to them with no names, and those are currently completing the application and background process. So, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just have a question. I know the middle school, I think, has three seasons of sports, is that right? Three sport seasons, is that, the middle school has three sport seasons, is that right? Or four? Okay. So, it's not, 'cause when I saw that they're empty, I said, "Oh, when do they start?" I mean, it's, do, is there still time? Oh.
And we're still-
Oh, that was right.
Uh, I don't see any asterisks next to those, do we have candidates for those three programs? That you know of?
Oh, okay.
Okay, just, just figured I'd check, all right. Anything else?
I was just wondering.
All in favor of approval of the high school and middle school athletic appointments as presented? Seven. So move. All right, and, committee report, I will start down to the right with Jackie, just in me.
Yes, we, uh, the negotiations team is, is currently meeting, uh, concerning the, I'm looking at another comment, sorry, the, the support staff and the bus drivers, they are not together, by the way, those are two separate contracts. We will be meeting soon in interest, uh, arbitration over the custodial contract.
Anything else from your MSMA, or?
Well, there's, the bulletins that are coming out of MSMA were, are tentative at the moment, so, um, we'll all know, uh, more information within a week or so, because the legislature is almost finished.
All right, uh, Jane, long-range facilities plan?
Yes, um, we haven't been, um, still waiting for the Harribonds to have finished the second portion of their non-rent study, so, we, we for that to sit up for the next meeting, so.
Okay. Donna, teacher evaluation and communication?
Yes, uh, under teacher evaluation, um, we continue to work really hard in order to prepare this proposal for the state for this summer to be submitted for approval or not. At the same time, we, we constantly see new emails coming down from the state or MSMA indicating to us, uh, some possible new changes to the language, in terms of, um, how mu, what percentage of, um, data would be used, what percentage of testing would be used in order to contribute to teachers' evaluation overall. And so, again, there, there needs to be some flexibility, it's a kind of a back-and-forth kind of a thing that continues to happen, so, um, you know, we depend on, on that being determined at the state in, in voting. But, uh, under communications, uh, we also continue to reach out to organizations in the town, um, in order to kind of reach out and speak with people about what's happening in our schools, particularly groups that don't have kids in the school. So, um, you know, that's underway, and as well as our website, our Facebook page for the school board, so, that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Kelly?
Um, I'm not, I'm, the policy committee has not met since our last meeting, we're due to meet Tuesday.
Anything else, legislative issues?
Well, Jackie doesn't know.
Chris?
Um, well, it's budget season yet again, of course, um, we had the audit report, uh, the, the joint town school audit report was presented by the accountants at MacPage on, uh, March nineteenth, we attended, the, the finance committee attended that, along with the, uh, town council. The town council had its first budget reading last night, and I would encourage every one of the board members here to go back and review that tape, if at all possible, um, to get a feeling for, um, hopefully not the way that the process is going to proceed, but certainly worth a, a view if you could not be there. I'm hoping that, that the communication and the, the working together improves greatly, but that remains to be seen. So, uh, obviously, as Christine had said, we have some pretty important dates coming up, uh, the most important of which is this Saturday, where we have our, um, our leadership joint workshop at eight thirty, and, uh, as Christine had said, we've, we've extended invitations to all of the town council, and I would highly encourage them to attend, and hope we see them all there.
All right. I have no other new business, so the will of the board this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor of adjournings? Seven. Thank you.